He wants my password. It never wants my password.
So I move that this council certified by a recorded vote that to the best of each council members' knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion convening the closed session were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, can we vote? I know that Michael will be joining us and he'll let us know his position. Okay, for those who were joining us by Zoom, it was a separate link and you can hear us. We're not taking comments via Zoom. And is, okay, before we go into the moment of silence, do we have a statement from the city attorney's office?
Yes. Good evening. My name is Pam O'Berry and I'm with Sands Anderson and we are the interim city attorneys for the city of Charlottesville. This statement is regarding the public hearing related to the real property tax rate. On Thursday evening, April 3rd, 2025, after 8:00 PM, it was brought to the attention of the city attorney's office that there may be a problem with the notice of public hearing related to the real property tax rate. On Friday morning, the city attorney's office began working with staff to understand the public notice process that had been undertaken. By Friday afternoon, the city attorney's office had collaborated with the city clerk's office, the city manager's office, and other city staff and determined that there was indeed a failure to timely post notice of public hearing in a prominent public location at which notices are regularly posted. Virginia Code Section 58.1-3321 Subsection C requires that the notice be published, one, in a newspaper of general circulation in the city, and two, in a prominent public location at which notices are regularly posted in the building where the governing body conducts its business, in this case, City Hall. And that those notices must be placed, published at least seven days prior to a public hearing regarding increases to the real property tax rate. By that same Friday afternoon, a corrective course of action was in place, and that course of action was approved by the city manager and now recommended to city council. The course of action that is recommended is that the real property tax rate public hearing scheduled for tonight should be removed from tonight's agenda, and anyone who wishes to speak tonight on the issue because they had previously prepared to be here to speak should still be permitted to do so. The city will republish the notice of public hearing in the daily progress so that the notice will have been published at least seven days prior to the rescheduled public hearing, and it will also be posted in a prominent public place in City Hall at least seven days prior to the rescheduled public hearing, which will be at the next regular meeting of city council on April 21st, 2025, should it be the will of city council.
Is there a second? No, that was just a statement, okay. Any comments or questions on that?
We already amended the agenda earlier.
Right, right. Before we go into announcements, we're just going to have a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Are there any announcements?
One announcement about the upcoming Black History Pathway Community Celebration. Mr. Alex Zan is coordinating a community celebration honoring central Virginia area musicians yesterday and today. Black History Pathway at Fourth Street to Preston Avenue was designated as an honorary street by the city of Charlottesville in 2021. The celebration is on Saturday, April 19th, 2025, at Carver Recreation Center at 1:00 PM. Highlights includes documentary on the history's Inja Store, musician Ivan Orr, the Clefs Band, United Worship Dance Ministry, a host of dynamic young musicians, and a special tribute to past iconic figures with exhibits and more. Black History Pathway is a celebration of historic achievements and contributions of African Americans throughout the area. Sponsors include Wegmans, Centerra, and Jefferson School Foundation, and contributors include the Abundant Life Ministry and the Bobby Green and Ebony Club.
Thank you so much, sir. You have an announcement?
Yes, I have an announcement as well. This weekend is the second Sunday of the month, so the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee is hosting their monthly neighborhood walk. This month, it's going to meet Sunday, April 13th, at 1:00 PM at the Colbrith Garage, and the walk is going to be around UVA grounds and the neighborhoods surrounding that. So I encourage everyone to come out and take a walk with your fellow Charlottesvilleians, UVA students, you're more than welcome to join as well. And we learn some facts along the way, we get to talk to our BikePed coordinator, and meet some new people. So it's really fun. Every month, the second Sunday, and then this month is 1:00 PM at Colbrith, this Sunday at 1:00 PM, meeting at the Colbrith Garage.
Yes, it's really nice. You got hooked on those. Yeah, I can't go this Sunday, but even though I've been on grounds plenty of times, I think, you know, you always learn something new because people are chiming in that maybe no something that you didn't. So anyway, it's cool. I'm glad that they do that. Any other announcements? If not, we're at the first opportunity for public comments and community matters. There are opportunities for 16 people to speak. We have three people that have signed up to speak, and you have three minutes to speak, and the first speaker is Tom Vandiver.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to speak to you. I'm Tom Vandiver. I'm the executive director of the Independence Resource Center here in Charlottesville. Our organization is charged by the state to provide advocacy services on behalf of people with disabilities in our community and ensure that accessibility laws are enforced. And as you know, we are particularly concerned about problems with appropriate access for the Dogwood Vietnam Memorial Plaza and access to the eastern portions of McIntyre Park. Access is a critical issue that affects upwards of 5,700 of our citizens, over 12% of our population, who have mobility impairments that need the required access modifications to fully participate in our society. These are our neighbors and friends who have difficulty walking and climbing stairs, who often use wheelchairs, walkers, canes, or crutches for mobility. There also are citizens who must contend with heart, respiratory, and fatigue issues. For these citizens, distance and terrain are the major obstacles for them. Over the past decade since 2015, completion of the John Warner Parkway, these citizens have been the victims of city decisions that minimize the importance of full access and instead say basically, "It's not up to standards, but it's good enough for you." Very late in the Parkway development process, city officials abandoned their existing plans to create a parking area and a pedestrian bridge to the memorial. As Parkway construction neared completion, officials hurriedly seized upon a consultant's recommendation to instead create a 5% grade, 500-foot switchback trail. Although claiming the pathway as a trail allowed the city to skirt more stringent access standards, the city nevertheless ignored existing federal standards for trails and accessible parking and instead designated a path of travel from parking located a third of a mile from the memorial, requiring the crossing of six lanes of very intense traffic to reach the site. In 2019, noncompliant features of the switchback were identified but dismissed by city staff. City council however, created a study group and charged it to provide appropriate and improved access to the memorial. The approved draft report of that group stated unequivocally that the best and only permanent solution to the creation-
Okay, you can just wrap it up when you-
I'm wrapping it up.
All right, all right.
Sorry. It's proximate parking area adjacent to the Parkway and installation of pedestrian bridge. But city staff deleted that sentence when they presented it to the council. Since then, the Dogwood Memorial has repeatedly urged, that is, the foundation has repeatedly urged the city to include this project in our CIP budget and to make a sincere effort to provide true and easy access. I urge you to do that, do what's in your powers to assist the veterans, to make this project a reality. The current switchback trail was never adequate, is now deteriorated, and remains noncompliant. The hardship we have been posed on our citizens to even visit the memorial is unconscionable.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, we need to fix it.
Fix it.
It's a city problem.
Thank you.
Sorry, I was slow.
The next speaker is Hank Cron. Hank Cron? Okay. Okay, the next speaker is Jackie Temkin?
Hi, my name is Jackie Temkin. As I spoke to you about at the last city council meeting about adding the amendment to the Parks and Rec Plan about women's sports and bringing more equitable access to play surfaces and partnerships, I'm very pleased that they did add an amendment to the plan. I think the inclusion policy would be amazing if they do indeed decide to implement it, but I'm asking city council and Parks and Rec to begin immediately implementing this plan and not waiting longer and longer to keep doing this. This is all work that can get done now. You know, Parks and Rec is hidden behind staffing issues as being the reason that partnerships aren't equitable, but that's not acceptable. You can't just use city resources for one group. You can't, you have to use whatever resources you have, and you have to equally allocate them over all demographics, especially ones that are protected in the VHRA. You can't just say, "Oh, you know, this is how we've been doing it, so this is how we're going to do it until we bring on more people." You have to look at the issue now and address it. The other part is that they're currently violating a bunch of their priority, you know, their booking policies, and that is also a thing that they don't actually need more money to begin to address. On 11 dates in March and April, Parks and Rec booked the Covenant Schools high school boys tennis team, which is not even based in the city, it's based in the county, for every court available on that day in the entire city, some dates on two parks. They allowed Covenant to book prior to other groups. They allowed Covenant to book more courts than they told any other group that they could book, and they allowed Covenant to book more hours for each of those courts than they gave every other group to. Covenant also falls below other programs in their own booking policies that should have had priority over these different things, and they have continuously violated this. This is not even the first time this has happened, and it has been brought to their attention several times. So I'd really like this situation to be addressed prior to the next fall season. There is no reason that they can't start working on it now. You've got months to address it, and it really shouldn't be a thing that we have to keep talking about because it's already their own policy, they just need to implement it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. So we, those that are two preregister speakers, we have opportunity for 14 other speakers. Who would like to?
I tried to preregister and I was late.
No, that's-
My name's Marty Allen, I'm a city resident and also on the board of a nonprofit called Reclaimed Hope Initiative, and I'm so excited to be here tonight.
What was the name again? We-
Reclaimed Hope Initiative. And it's kismet, I guess, that I was here to read a letter on behalf of the board when this strategic plan has been shared, because as I read through the strategic plan, some of our mission goals align very well with some of the goals that are outlined in the strategic plan, specifically in the section that's under partnerships. When you talk about the bullet, "Continue to develop collaborative community services as well as address gaps in social safety net and wraparound service provisions to enhance public outcomes." Our board and the staff at Reclaimed Hope Initiative serve a very specific part of our community. So I'm going to read the letter from the board, and then I'll read it hopefully in time if, I don't know how these things go, but if council has questions or I can address anything, I'm happy to. From the board, "Dear members of the council, we hope this letter finds you well. We're writing on behalf of Reclaimed Hope Initiative, a local nonprofit dedicated to serving families navigating foster care, adoption, and the needs of children and families with disabilities. Our organization offers a vital service that are unique to our community, and we respectfully ask for your support in funding our upcoming grant application. Reclaimed Hope Initiative stands alone in providing comprehensive wraparound support for families who are often facing overwhelming challenges. We offer parents night out, respite care, support groups, and an inclusive summer camp that provides children with disabilities an opportunity to experience summer camp activities in an environment where they can just be kids." This is not in the letter, I'm going to deviate just a little bit. I've worked a long time in nonprofits, my time is running out. Seriously, y'all, Google Camp Hope, it's amazing. In addition to the critical services we provide, our work helps prevent the isolation many families feel when caring for children who have experienced trauma and with special needs. No other organization in our community meets the specific needs of these children and families. Time is running out, so I'm going to read this quote from a board member and also someone who receives services from RHI. "As someone who grew up in Charlottesville, I have a deep personal connection to this community and its people. I am also a parent to children with disabilities, a foster and adoptive parent, a pediatric medical professional with years of experience serving families in the University of Virginia's Children's Hospital. I've seen the services provided by RHI transform families' ability to stay connected and interface with families in dire of the services." I know, just let me finish the quote. "A primary driver in my continued role on the RHI board is to contribute to RHI's growth in serving families at risk for children's welfare involvement related to intergenerational trauma and marginalization."
Thank you.
Three minutes goes really fast.
Yeah.
I have a copy of the letter.
If you can share it with the clerk and she'll make sure we get it. Thank you so much. Mario, would you like to come up, sir?
Hello, everyone. My name is Mario. I'm the resident in Corson Hall, and the reason I am here, I was here five months ago, six months ago.
Yes, sir.
I talked to everybody, my neighbor using drugs, and they sent all this fuel to my room through to vent heater, air conditioner, and I talked to the manager. Manager said, "Nobody used drugs." I was hospitalized seven times. As you see, I was Friday night and Saturday night, I vomited blood, and I am here to just tell everybody, I don't know who is listening. I talked to Chief Picasas. He told me five months ago, send me the letter to my email. I sent it to him, he did not respond it. I met him two weeks ago, he was with a bunch of his bodyguard, police or something. I told him to come talk to him privately. I told him, "How come you didn't respond to my letter? These people, they threatened me to kill me, and I am not safe." And even I called police, police said, "This is not our problem, this is management problem." Anyhow, I talked to Chief Picasas. I said, "What happened?" He said he sent my letter to my assistant. I told him, "Who is your assistant?" He didn't give me any answer. Basically, they don't give me any right information, but next two weeks, I'm going to meet the governor. And so they told me, his office told me, give them my social security, my driving license, everything, for the governor's safety. Anyhow, I do not want to be negative. I want to see, I'm not safe, who is going to help me? They are still using drugs. Two weeks ago, I was in a hospital, and last Friday and Saturday, I was hospitalized again. So anyhow, thank you so much. I hope you guys take your action.
Thank you. Mario, we hear you, and we'll have someone to follow up with you, okay, sir?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker? Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Jim Moore, I'm resident of Charlottesville, and I hope to speak a little about the real estate tax during that period that you'll allow us since we came to speak about that later, but right now, I'd like to address the process of notification of tax increases. I feel there's a confusion over the purpose of what was to be that hearing. Your agenda says this is about a real property tax rate. Your daily progress notice says this hearing would have been about a proposed real property tax increase. Your proposed budget says that the budget does not require a tax increase. So let's make it clear that the hearing that we will hopefully have, or excuse me, the budget that you'll be voting on tonight, does require a tax increase. I hope that in the future, the city will use its extensive means to more clearly inform its residents when it proposes consequential changes such as tax increases.
Thank you. Anyone else like to-
Just as a clarification, the budget does not include tax increases?
There's no change to the tax rate, there is a change to the reassessments. That's the increase.
Assessments.
The tax rate.
Would anyone else like to speak? Oh, I'm sorry. Please.
So I'm going to talk about an issue with one of the apartment complexes here in the city that I've been living in since July. The apartment complex says that it provides safe and affordable housing. We have garage doors to our basement that never closes, and we have a door that leads you throughout the entire apartment complex that's supposed to be fogged. The door is broken, we've indicated to them three or four times that you can access the entire building through this one stairwell. Bicycles have been stolen, and the thing that really irritated me, I didn't plan to be here until two hours ago, the thing that irritated me is when you come up that staircase, you can get into our lobby, which is where our packages are put, and this lady showed me that her daughter's birthday party gifts were stolen today. Somebody went into the mailroom, zipped the bag open, took all the contents. No cameras in the room. We have people that come up to staircase, sleep on the couches. We had a man that we just found, for two weeks he's been living in our bathroom. We just had a exercise room that was vandalized, and it'll probably never open again. But the problem that we have with this building is we have people from all over the world in this building, so a lot of them don't dare to pick their heads up because they're afraid they're just going to get kicked out of that apartment complex. Whenever we go to them, we're going to have a meeting tomorrow, we have it every Tuesday, the second Tuesday of the month, we'll have it to them, we'll present these ideas to them again, that the doors don't lock, that there are people wandering the hallways, that people pushing the doorbells and running, and nobody does anything about it. We ask them why, we supposedly have security cameras, why don't the security people look at those? We have security in the building two nights, four nights a week, and we've, why can't the security team look at the video cameras? And they said, "No." And we believe it's because they don't want anybody to see that there's a problem in our hallways. So that's why they're not allowing anybody to look at theirs, but yet they complain about our security team only looking at their phone while they're sitting at the desk. I propose, why don't you give them something to do? Let them look at the video cameras so we can see who's in the hallways, who's doing what. So we have a real issue, since I've been there in July, this is our second management group, same organization, but second management group, and some of them have even been replaced. So if any of you would like to meet me sometime tomorrow or one of these days this week, I'd love to show you that the elevator, the doors don't shut for the garage, we have people in there in the morning smoking marijuana, all throughout the building, that people are complaining about not feeling safe. But we don't know where to go, we don't know who to talk to. We try to call the director of the nonprofit, he won't take our calls anymore. They're building more buildings, which we're afraid are only going to be a replica of what we're dealing with now. In our neighborhood, we're the only group, the only building that has security, so we're trying to figure out why is it that our building needs security? And the ones across the street beside us and behind us, which we're, no, they don't have security. So anyway, if there's somebody that I could talk to about how I could get more people to understand that we're not safe in our building, which is one of their premises, is safe, affordable housing, and we're not safe.
So, so, Simon, can we make sure someone can follow up with him? But you may have mentioned it, but did you say what apartments it is?
And first, my name is Richard, the last name is Bard, and I'm in the Kendallwood apartment complex.
Okay.
So, you know, we've got people from everywhere, we've got moms and dads.
Yeah.
We've got people from foreign countries who are afraid to, to say anything. So when I saw the lady's birthday gifts being stolen today, I, it's like, okay, we gotta talk to somebody.
Yeah.
So who do, who do, is there somebody I can give my email address?
Yeah, we'll make sure that, we'll make sure that you get to speak to someone before you leave tonight.
Okay. I mean, I'll be able to stay because I'm with her. I may try to leave before it gets too dark.
Actually, I think you spoke with someone in my office today and she, she wrote down your information, so we'll pass that along.
Did I, did I give her my information?
She can't.
I have my phone number, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, one of our, one of our deputy, my deputy city manager will talk to you before you leave. She'll meet you at the back door.
That'll be great.
Thank you so much, Richard. Would anyone else like to speak? There'll be another opportunity at the end of the, the meeting? Okay, so we, I will close the public matters at this point and we'll go to the consent agenda item?
Consent agenda. Number two, we have minutes from March 13th, March 17th, March 20th, and March 27th. Number three, resolution for allocation of $788,000 of FY '25 Charlottesville Affordable Housing Fund grant funding. Second reading. Four, resolution considering 1114 East High Street special exception permit for Bill Two requirements. Number five, resolution considering a special exception permit request for 1418 Emmett Street. Number six, resolution to appropriate funds from the Virginia Department of Transportation for the Monticello Second Project, $1,304,308, one of two readings.
Thank you. Say a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Can we vote, please?
Motion.
I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second, fine.
Cool.
Okay, so a pa, motion for the consent agenda passes 5-0. We're now at the city manager's report.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and members of the public. Tonight, I've asked Deputy City Manager Ratliff to provide an update on the internal work that the city staff has been working on in regards to your strategic plan. As you know, a few years back, I guess 2023, you adopted strategic outcome areas. Uh, and we have been working with staff internally. And Eden will walk us through some of the results of that work.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name's Eden Ratliff. I'm the Deputy City Manager for Administration. It's an exciting time and thank you to everybody who came out, I'm sure specifically to hear the update on the City Council's strategic plan. We appreciate it. If there's anyone who doesn't have this handout, I think I probably saw it before the meeting. It has the nine strategic outcome areas agreed by the council in not this past summer, but the summer previous to that. And so this is an update where we, with 112 city strategists, who are all city employees in this organization, worked together over a very long, organized day of figuring out kind of what should the work of this city be in order to help the city council achieve its strategic outcome areas? And this pamphlet, while not perfect, is very good in terms of establishing the work that has been done over the last two years and the work that we will continue to make substantial fireworks on to achieve your, your outcome areas. So you heard me say what has been done and what will be done. This is what we're calling a bridge plan. This is a three-year document, of which we are nearly two years through, so we have one more year to go, of the city council's nine strategic outcome areas and the work that we have done over the last two years, which of course includes a, and, and change in administration in the city manager's office, what we will do for the next year. In the fall of, of this coming year, what will be fiscal year 2026, we will regather the city council in a council retreat to look at the progress we've made, which is substantial. You're gonna read some things in here and you're gonna go, hey, I know we've done that. Couple examples. One of the things that we have completed or is substantially complete is the reimagination of our locally administered program with the Virginia Department of Transportation. There have been several public updates to the city council and the great work that is happening in that VDoc portfolio. So we're gonna be reviewing all of that in the fall and determining what the final or next five-year strategic plan should look like. So this, this document here, these strategies, is designed to say, hey, this is the progress that we've made in a lot, you know, nine strategic outcome areas. What will come next are gonna be measures, right? You know, the question is always say, okay, well, you set these goals, you set these strategies, but what happens next? How do you know that you're making progress? How do you know what, what is happening here? Well, we're gonna measure that. So this summer, we'll be rolling out a portion of our website, what we're calling the Strategic Plan Tracker. So that in real time, you can see the progress that's being made on these strategies that culminate towards progress, towards the different outcome areas and how we're measuring success with that. The city received an email earlier today and someone said, I would like to know how many affordable housing units are being built within the city after the new zoning code? Great question. That's documented in this plan, right? We want to allow for there to be more affordable housing, right? That's why the city council has taken action that it has here in the past couple of years. So we'll measure that. That'll become a measure. Earlier today, you heard the ADA transition plan. You know, there are thousands of different deficiencies throughout the organization, throughout the city in terms of ADA compliance. Well, we're gonna measure progress on what, on what that looks like. So this is an update to let the city council and the public know. We haven't forgotten about the strategic plan. There's been a lot of work. I wanna again thank the 112 city strategists throughout the city that have helped make it possible. Thanks to the city manager's leadership to be able to kind of rise all the way up towards, through the organization of the work that needs to happen in order to achieve, you know, kind of the areas of importance, the outcome areas established by the city council. So we're really excited. Again, I, I will say this document is not perfect, but it is very good in terms of the work that needs to get done in order to make progress.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just received it and it's very concise. I'm looking forward to, to, to reading it in more in depth, so.
Happy to take any questions that the council might have. This is available on our website. I think we also have linked it on our social media. You know, this is a document that's designed to kind of guide the action that we take. The city manager and the budget office have done a really great job over the last several weeks in our budget hearings about talking about kind of the areas of focus in next year's operational budget. That is designed to give the resources needed to achieve, you know, these, these strategies that are within this document to achieve your.
I saw you give the students some, did you ask them?
Yeah, absolutely. They're super excited. I think they came all the way here, uh, to hear about the.
Clearly, nobody's as excited as he is.
No one's more excited about it than I am. That, that is true. We came in, or, I'm sorry. Oh, good. I'm glad I found a partner in, in my excitement. There's some excitement. I think I show outward excitement, but, you know, the buzz in the room and there are people. When we met, gathered 112 employees and showed like this hype video, you know, of getting people excited about the strategic plan, they really engaged. I thought it was great. You know, people said, you know, I actually have an opinion about what should be happening in this.
How does one become a, a strategic plan strategist in the cities or?
That, that's a great question. So we started at the top of the organization, the city manager's office, and went to every lead team member, department director, for those who are not familiar with the terminology, and just said, who on your teams have opinions? Who on your teams is doing some of this work? Who on your team is passionate about the work they're doing in the city? And we tried to make sure that we got a great cross-section of employees and I think every level is represented. And, and there, what was really cool is to see them all like meet each other, right? I mean, there's 28 different offices and departments in the city, 11,00, nearly 1,100 full-timers doing incredible work. And we started putting people not just in areas where they work now, maybe areas where they previously worked, areas where they bring expertise, might have opinions about it. And we created teams for each outcome area and just said, what should we be doing, right? I mean, this is a council priority. And you guys may remember, you came up with a couple of sentences for each one and we said, well, what should the work do? Right, for example, public safety is not just police, fire, and EMS. There's a lot more too within that.
Right.
And we had some of those conversations. And it was great. Super appreciative of Raftalos, Michelle Ferguson and her team and outside consultant that partnered with us to do all this work. You know, it was, it was a lot of fun.
Thank you. Fantastic.
Any questions from the council?
I have a question. Um, so the, the nine strategic initiatives were done were initially created in a council retreat the year, I think, before I was.
Summer of 2023.
So it was before that I was, I was elected. So of everyone up here, I was the one not involved. But when I joined council, we had a conversation and brought up to speed and, you know, thumbs up, am I on board?
Right.
Appreciated that a lot. Thank you. They are all things that I think are pretty and arguably good to support. The one kind of note that I have and, and I, my campaign was all about transit and housing. With trans, transportation, including our bus system, but also bike and pet infrastructure.
Sure.
So when we get this, I immediately wanna flip to kind of my two things. And I notice in the transportation category, it's strictly focused on our bus system. And there's not a mention of any of the other ways to get around.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll gently point out point number four, if I can read it. Develop the transportation planning capacity to prioritize and deliver projects that integrates all modes of travel, prioritizing safety and efficiency across the network. So one of our transportation planners, Ben, Ben Chambers, who we can call out, who is also, by the way, very excited about the strategic plan. That's what he's been saying, right? In public meetings, he's been coming and standing right here saying, please don't give me more money. I need more time to deliver on all of these projects. He's done a great job of kind of emphasizing that point. So I think from our standpoint, with one year to go and looking two years back, so remember, we're starting in that summer of 2023, when we looked at kind of the needs of transportation and other modes, not just the bus system, of transportation, what we were saying then was, what's the work we're doing? What's the work that we need to be doing? And how can we develop that infrastructure to make sure that we're actually delivering on that? And recently, in a finance committee, right? There's a memo that I think was shared with all the council. You know, we've made substantial progress on that in the next two years. And now he is saying, let us develop this master plan. Let us develop the capacity so that we can come back in a more informed way to the city council and ask for resources, knowing that we can deliver. In my mind, that is all strategic. I, I thought it was fantastic. And this whole point, I think, is Ben Chambers and that, that priority.
And I love that it says that. I would like to see it kind of called out and, and have the words bike and pedestrian infrastructure in here to give them kind of equal weight. I know that it's not in the graphic and we don't need to necessarily expand the graphic.
Yeah, yeah.
But to, you know, make that bold and clear because I think that, that is super important to helping achieve, not just that, that category, but you know, that's climate action. That's economic opportunity. That's all of those things, so.
Yeah, great feedback.
Making that as big and bold as the others. I think not hiding it in all modes. I think it's important to call it.
Awesome. No, I appreciate that. And I think the council retreat, just to talk about that for a second, will be a really great opportunity for this exact conversation, right? I mean, it'll be an opportunity and I think we're gonna guide the council through saying, okay, let's look at each outcome area. Are they right? Are they described properly? Should there be more? Should there be less? Which I think we're definitely gonna talk about. You know, how do we be as strategic with this as possible? So I think that's certainly on the menu.
Yeah, but thank you for this. This is very nice.
Absolutely. Glad you like it. Any other questions, Mayor or Council?
Do we have a time for the retreat yet?
This summer. I am working on finalizing a few options for you right now.
The sooner the better.
I know.
Vacation schedules are being set now.
Yeah.
Yeah, gotta make sure I have the people who can talk to you, so. Yes, working on that too.
Yeah.
But to be clear, this summer is just checking in on the strategic plan or updating it?
Uh, it's really moving towards bridging to the next five years.
So that will give the opportunity to sort of formally endorse what.
And go deeper and go different, all of those things. That's, that's the reason for shifting to a three-year because we've, we pretty much have had so much already baking, if I can use that term.
There's a lot in here.
Yeah, so ultimately, it gives us the opportunity now to just kind of forecast and, and look a bit forward, predict more.
I think one, one of the questions to exactly what the city manager is saying is, you know, we'll say, are these the right ones? Were they described correctly? And that, that's a broad question designed to go many different directions.
Great.
Okay, so.
Thank you very much.
A couple of other things that I have for just general public edification. On Wednesday, April 9th, at 5:30 in the gym at Jackson Villa, our transportation team will be on hand to talk with the public about making Fifth Street safer. So we encourage any members of our community who have been concerned about what has happened over the past few years on that roadway to, to join us for that conversation. Ben Chambers and team will be there, leading that conversation.
And if you can't make it, there's also a landing page on the city website that talks about the different options that are being considered with a survey you can fill out there too.
And in addition to that, the Charlottesville City Market kicked off its 52nd season, which is amazing. This past Saturday, we encouraged the public to join us from eight to one downtown. And we remind our, our residents who have SNAP benefits that they can, they should check in with the market management tent to use their benefits to access the, the market for additional services that are available to them. And lastly, next week is the start of the 2025 National Crime Victims Rights Week, April 6th through the 12th. On Tuesday, April 8th, Charlottesville Victim and Witness Assistance Program will be at the Freedom of Speech Wall, hosting an information and resource table from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. I'm sharing that on behalf of the Commonwealth's Attorney's Office. So, Mr. Mayor, that is my report.
Thank you. So we're now in the action items. I just want clarification. Do I go to number eight about the?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. The next item is FY 2026 budget, public hearing. And Chrissy will come and speak on that.
No, I'm sorry.
No, excuse me, sir.
You can't.
Yeah. Chrissy.
Good evening, council. I'm Chrissy Hamel, Director of Budget. We are here tonight for a public hearing on the budget itself. As you'll note, the proposed budget was presented to you. This is our second of two public hearings that we held on the budget. March 20th was our community budget forum. That was the first public hearing. The proposed general fund budget is just over $264 million. It's detailed here. We've also talked about some amendments and changes along the way through our work sessions. We'll have a work session this Thursday night to work on finalizing some of those. And you'll note also that in this memo, there's roughly about $792,000 in addition to what's in the proposed budget for some accounts that have been budgeted and are projected to not be spent at the end of this year that need to carry over for operations in next year. And so with that, I will answer any questions that you might have.
Yeah, could I, I'm sorry to interrupt. The gentleman here, could you please help me, Sam? I'm not tracking what's going on. So there was an issue we had earlier where someone said that we didn't advertise things appropriately. Sir, please take.
No, sir. Sir, please, we have to have order, please. There will be hearing and you'll be allowed to speak. So have a seat.
Just a second, please.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a seat, please, sir. Thank you.
So help me catch up because I'm confused. So we took an item off the list, which I think I understand why.
In regards to the public hearing for the tax rate.
For the tax rate because the rate did not change, but the amount of tax went up because the assessments.
We're still obligated to hold a public hearing even though the rate did not change, but to give the public the opportunity to speak because it is a part of our budget process.
But somehow the way that we advertised that wasn't exactly right.
We did not meet the public notice standard of making sure that we posted the notice in a place that the public could access it beyond simply placing it in the newspaper. So that was an oversight. It is not something we are accustomed to having had happen. It happened this year and it was a mistake. It was an accident.
That's all good. And what Ms. Hamel is doing tonight is related to but distinct from in that.
We're still moving forward through the budget process and we are making sure that we adhere to our obligation to provide proper public notice for the public hearing related to the tax levy. So that is what we're resetting. We're resetting the order in which that happens. But we are still moving forward on the budget conversation because we can amend our budget at any time.
Right.
So you're continuing your process to consider the budget as proposed. And because there's no change to the tax rate, we have proposed a budget that we believe works until you conclude your process where you confirm or change that.
Okay, thank you very much.
And just to be clear, we, obviously there's a question. Assessments happen. The city doesn't do that. That's the market. That happens. Get that. But just to be clear, no change to the tax rate is happening as part of the budget tonight?
To any of our taxes, any of our tax leaving choices that we have available. Nothing has been changed in increasing the rates from the prior year.
Right. And I just want to clarify that, that there are no rate increases for any of the taxes and there are no plans. I don't think we even have the ability, but we certainly don't have any plans to raise any of those rates. So I just want to be clear on that matter.
So do we have any other clarification questions for councils before I open up the public hearing?
I think, were you finished?
I'm done. Unless you have questions.
Yeah. Are there any other clarification questions? Okay, I now open up the public hearing. Would you like, do you have any comments?
I apologize for the distraction, however. I thought that the attorney had just announced that those of us who were scheduled to speak to the hearing that's been postponed would be allowed to speak anyway. So when we moved on to the budget, I now then just simply have the question of when would those people have that opportunity?
That's now.
Now.
This is the public hearing.
Okay, well, it was listed separately. So now we can continue to agree to disagree that the budget does not require a tax rate. Again, your notice that you put in the ad specifically says there will be an effective tax rate increase, 7.359%. So, you know, when you talk about temporal aspects of the complex city code, state code and semantics, but this is important because you will be voting to effectively increase our taxes 7.4%. Some of us, the reason this is important is that some of us will pay much more than that. I lease a duplex apartment in Belmont to UVA student. Her tax will increase 19%. Now adding the last three years consecutively, that brings her total to 76%. So this year, based on your votes, she'll be paying $1,104 more dollars in property tax than she paid in 2021. I'm the landlord and I just pay it myself. I try to keep rent stable for good tenants. Unfortunately, I'm not rich. The return on this property requires the tenant bear this cost. This home is a nice place, but the city estimates its value much lower than the average. Now, because of the hike in assessment, this property, I know is not average. It's unusual. But I wonder how many other pockets of below, lower market homes face similar burdens? As the third costliest city in Virginia, I encourage you to consider whether your tax trajectories are sustainable without unduly straining residents. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Would anyone else like to speak on the public hearing for the budget? Okay, I see no other hands raised. I will now close the public hearing. And so the next item we have is the ordinance adopting a budget and annual appropriation of fund for the city of Charlottesville for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2026. Counsel, do you have any questions about this item?
Just to be clear, that's not a second public hearing that one we just had is incorporates both those ordinances.
Sam.
What was the question? I'm sorry.
A was related to the public hearing that was removed from the agenda. So A was also removed from consideration. That will be considered once the other public hearing is held. So we're looking at item B.
First reading on adopting the budget.
Yes.
Right.
Yep.
So one question I had is, Mr. Sanders, I recall that you or maybe Ms. Hamel, somebody had mentioned since the last time we were together that there were some additional funds that were to be spent or allocated. Or I didn't, I got only a sort of in passing mention of.
For the work session.
Other money. And then there was another in passing reference earlier tonight. Can you elaborate?
Sure. So our revenue team has continued to meet. The revenue projections in the budget are from February. We have continued to work those. Public, personal property, those types of assessments have continued to come in. So Thursday night, we will be bringing you a few revised revenue projections for you to consider in terms of, it is additional revenue and you will have those as an opportunity to reassign someplace else in the budget.
And then that action is a part of the process. It's our normal process that towards the end of you going through your cycle of work sessions, you have the most up-to-date revenue projections to consider. And as Ms. Hamel just pointed out, when there's more than what we have allotted for, that was when I presented to you the proposed budget, March 4th or 5th, whenever that was, it was like a lifetime ago. The goal would be to allow you, the council, the opportunity to use those funds for anything that's come up in the conversations. You've heard from a lot of the members of the public over the course of work sessions that there might be an item that we did not invest in as a part of the proposed budget. We may not have invested in as much as you might now want to. So the flexibility that comes before we close the budget on the 14th through adoption, then you would have the opportunity to direct those funds. So that's the reason for it being a part of this step in the process.
And this Thursday night.
And that's Thursday night's work session. That's our wrap up.
We'll have the Excel spreadsheet to do that.
Chrissy labels this one the wrap up. So it's the great big wrap up moment.
And as I recall, one of the things, it's always sort of one of the last bits of data to come in is on personal property taxes, what the values of used cars have been like and so on. And that's not because people haven't been trying to do things earlier. It's because the data just isn't available until about April 1st.
Until we get the collections, yes.
Yeah. So anyway, I, so I guess we'll get the details on Thursday.
Yes.
And so I guess this tax rate public hearing, I'm sorry, you've probably told us three times, but when are we going to hear that?
April 21st.
21st.
So that can happen after the budget is closed?
Yes.
Okay.
Because if it requires an amendment, you have the ability to take that action to amend if there's a change in any way.
Right.
Thank you.
So is there agreement to current this item to the April 14th special meeting for a second vote?
Yes.
Okay. Mike, are you okay with that, sir? Okay. Okay, great. We're going to item number nine of resolution for the city of Charlottesville Parks and Rec Master, Comprehensive Master Plan Adoption. Resolution is a second reading for that? Mr. Rea.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, thank you so much for the opportunity. Once again, to stand before you, presenting the master plan, our consultant is online. So if we have any additional questions, he'll be popping in to answer some additional questions. This will just be a quick presentation. My last slide will be talking about what we heard from council and also community members of how we amended the plan for final adoption. So again, master plan update. We've been working really, really hard on this almost for 19 months now. Again, we followed a very strategic plan on how to move the Parks and Recreation Master Plan forward. Again, it is a guide. It is a roadmap to a 10-year horizon for the Charlottesville Parks and Recreation. We focus on investing in recreational opportunities for residents and also focus on community needs, unmet needs and importance. We also look at reinvesting and reinvesting in city-owned and city-co-owned parks within the city of Charlottesville borders. How did we do this? With different ways of engaging our community. We had a good number of in-person engagement. We looked through the lens of not traditional engagement where community members are coming to us. We had four events where we went out to the community and that was very strategic because we have found out on our website that we never got certain comments in certain areas. So we targeted four areas to actually go out to the community to get their feedback. We also done our traditional survey and then also our project website. That was a interactive map. So for example, if people did not want to go to our meetings, they can just go drop a pin and add what amenity they would like. So those are the engagements that we use. And again, we also use focus groups and stakeholder meeting groups as well. So that's a lot of community engagement. And I want to take this opportunity to thank the community for actually really investing in their parks and recreation amenities. The outcomes, again, community values and needs. Assessing parks, facilities and amenities and pools. We looked at outcomes of programming and services, level of service provisions, operational and organizational assessment. We also looked through the lens of park to park and facility by facility improvement plans. And then also framework plans from council, Washington, Market Street and Court Square. We also then focused on cost assessment for our capital improvements and then also a strategic action plan. So at our March 17th meeting, we took your comments to heart and we updated our master plan. And I'll just read through number one, inclusion of gender equity status and then also recommendations. We looked at emphasis on, really focusing on leagues and sports. Because when we done the analysis, we have noticed that when we looked at gender, around about 53% that uses our program are females and 44% are males. But we do understand that when it comes to sports, we need to make effort to focus on female sports as well. We also then, number two, remove the term parking from our design guidelines on page 51 to 55. Number three, we ensured biking into our connectivity chapter. And you'll see that update made on page 63 to 64. We then also incorporate what we heard was the three-notch trail was also in our plan. That means we will make sure to work with our neighboring partners in order to make this trail come to fruition. We also then added inclusion compliance and standards of best practices. At the moment, we found out that we do have a webpage that talks about inclusion, but we're looking at best practices so that the community can come to any of our programs and we will provide a systematic approach of how to meet those accommodations, anything and everything within our Parks and Recreation System. We also added cooperative recreation program standards. Again, that talks specifically about partnerships. How are we going to conduct partnership? We are looking at a proposal. And then how do we value those proposals to our values as Parks and Rec? Does it meet our need as a community so that we do not get ourselves into a situation whereby we are accepting every proposal, but we're going to put it through a systematic approach? Again, adding partnership best practices, we added that as well. And then also again, at the end in our appendix E, we looked at some inclusion policy templates. So those are all the changes that we have. And just to mention, if you have any questions, once we do have a master plan, Parks and Rec staff has a lot of work to do. We're going to have to then take all these recommendations and then figure out how do we prioritize for the next 10 years? And again, just because we have a plan, Parks and Rec staff is very committed to sit down and look at priorities and make a plan, a strategic plan, so that we can get funding, so that we can start implementing these changes. Questions?
Just to touch on something that was raised earlier this evening, we heard again from Ms. Tempkin about the emphasis that she wanted us to be placing on women's athletics. And you've made some comments about that this evening. And she thanked you all for having added that little line in there. But she raised a number of very specific operational concerns about booking policies and so on. I realize we're talking about the master plan here and not about booking policies. But I just want to know, is that something, I mean, you've heard it now. You would have heard it two weeks ago. You heard it again tonight. Is something going to be done to look into this and to figure this thing out? Because what she's describing really doesn't make a lot of sense.
Yeah, so we have an allocation policy. And again, also in the master plan, we address that allocation policy. Staff has been noticing an increase, especially in our tennis courts and pickleball over the last 34 months. And the allocation policy that we have, we're going to have to pivot. So staff is actually working at the moment is looking at our allocation policy and really redirecting of the prioritization. Prioritization meaning there's specific Parks and Rec recreational activities is always first. They get first access. Then we go down the list to nonprofits and certain schools are nonprofits. So that's how they fall into like a private school. They fall into that category as a nonprofit because they are a nonprofit. And then we have for-profits. So we know we have a demand and we know we're going to have to address. And as I mentioned, staff is actually working, as we speak, is to update those prioritization and allocation policies. So we can meet the community's needs.
I mean, on, one of the things she was describing was that apparently Covenant School had been able to reserve basically every tennis court in the city at a particular time. That seems to me to be something that probably isn't a very good idea and that maybe somebody should figure out, okay, maybe they're a nonprofit. They get some priorities over some other people. But that's a specific policy that ought to get revisited.
Yep, absolutely.
Related question, which we also heard a lot about in the last few weeks, particularly on email, is the question of allocation of tennis courts versus pickleball courts. Of course, we, the committee on which Council Pinkston and I serve, the DART and TOW committee, had agreed that we would authorize them to go ahead and convert those courts out there to all pickleball. But one of the questions that I had raised at the time was, could we at the same time say, we're going to say, and say, okay, DART and TOW may be pickleball, but Penn Park is now going to be tennis? And if there are, if there's a way to study the allocation, the relative allocation of those courts? When we were talking about this at our DART and TOW committee meeting a month or so ago, one of the things that struck me was that it didn't seem as though there was really any, any joint planning, any sense of, gee, we've got one community here. Then they play pickleball and they play tennis. And let's figure out between tennis and pickleball, between city and the county, how are we going to balance these things out? Is there, have you given any thought to how something like that might work?
Yeah, we gave it a lot of thought and we're still trying to wrap our heads around of what we're going to be doing. Been talking to the director of Alamo County. Also, how do we approach? We even spoke about that the DART and TOW master plan calls for tennis courts as well. And they have land. That's an opportunity. Penn Park, very, very, we have a lot of amenities within Penn Park. So it's going to be very difficult to see how we can expand. But there was always one thing that always popped around was staff conversations when it comes to Penn Park. We have senior programs, so, and it's very convenient for seniors to go to Penn Park and to play pickleball. Do we want our residents to go to a non-resident park to just go play pickleball? And that's the, that's where we kind of debating and discussing that point is, does this make sense where we're telling our own residents to go to a county to play a sport that they would really like? Or do we find other ways, strategic ways to still meet those needs? And that's where we are at the moment.
Thank you. Mike?
No, I just, congratulations on finishing this. There was a lot of work and a lot of effort and I appreciate, you know, you all have taken some last minute critiques and feedback and I think you've handled that well. And yeah, so just kudos on a really great work product. Now we just have to figure out how to pay for all the things that you all in the community say we need.
Natalie?
Yeah, which is a nice segue into one of the questions or points that I wanted to make, which was just, I think I know this, but I want to just recap it. In this, the budget we're currently working on, there's not funding for the master plan because we were still kind of trying to figure out what it was going to look like, but that'll happen next year?
No, there is money in the, there is money in the CIP. There's $500,000 in CIP for FY '26, which has been, the, Mr. Anthony has been reminded, he is to prioritize ADA improvements first and foremost. But because the Parks team, as they're all staring at me right now, have many, many priorities on things that they need to get done. So they will blend for us to look at what is a series of projects. It may be one big project that we just. It may be one big project that we just need to get to and some barrier access issue improvements, but the goal is to try to blend those two with a half million dollars, mainly because I want it there to be something available to the team in this fiscal year while they figure out the prioritization work.
And then the out-years are kind of placeholders, and that's what we'll, we'll hear later for a little more specific.
Exactly.
Okay, excellent. And then thank you for the, for not only making the updates but presenting them in a clear way so we knew what the highlights. I especially like seeing, I mean, the right side was nice, but the left side's got the gender equity, reprioritizing parking and biking, and then including the three-notch trail. Those are all very significant, and I'm, I'm excited to see, especially if the three-nice trail works out, the, the inner-city connectivity on, on bikes is going to be super important. So, thank you very much.
The intercity?
In, inner.
Oh, inner, okay.
Yeah, like once, well.
I thought maybe you were talking Crozada Charlottesville.
Well, that, that is the trail. Yeah, so I guess both, inner and in, inter. Because we'll see hopefully more bike traffic from outside the city, but then how do they get around within the city?
Correct.
So both of those things. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Michael, do you have anything?
Just one question. The, the changes to the outline look good. I know via email a few weeks ago, you had emailed some changes around access to the Rivasana River. Are those changes incorporated still, or were they kind of?
Those accesses still in there. Just mentioned that we're going to have to do further studies on the accessibility of the river access.
Okay. So the, the changes from the email are still incorporated?
Yeah, but it's not in, again, it's a, it's a plan that we mentioned that. That means we still have to do further studies with other departments, economic development and all that, to come up with a plan.
And that is also including the, there were just some additional changes in terms of giving like general river access more prominent, separate from anything about like the specific plan discussed last work session, just kind of generally highlighting the Rivasana River as part of it. So maybe, maybe I'm just mishearing.
And I can just quickly clarify. Mike, are you online?
I am. I so appreciate the question and the comment. What we, what we tried to do as part of the, the overall approach to the master plan was, was to take into consideration folks' desire to emphasize, as part of this, to emphasize access to the river. And so though we can't make any very specific concrete recommendations, like say what we're doing with Tansler Park or Market Street, we do recognize that, that a study needs to be done. That is not something that was a part of this scope. And so to emphasize that, what I have tried to do is incorporate the, the fact that that study needs to be done as part of the executive summary in the capital cost estimating plan, as well as make more of a highlight on it in the actual cost estimating chapter. But we did incorporate additional language just around the need for river access and emphasizing, obviously, the fact that it's a huge priority for your community. Hopefully, that answers your question.
No, it does. I think, I think I was just misunderstanding, but those are the exact areas in the email. Just so I wanted to confirm they were still in there. So that's it. Thank you.
I'd just like to say thank you for the study. You guys really got a lot of input from the public, a lot of different ways over the course of the study, and was able to receive a lot of input from us at the end. So I'm excited there, and now we have a plan that we can work from. So thank you and your staff so much. I know in this community, a study like this is exceedingly difficult. I've been through it in different hats on, so thank you all so much. This was hard. I know it was, so it's appreciated. Thank you so much.
So do we need a resolution to, what is the action?
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
Okay, so page? Okay, so I would move the resolution on page 82 of the packet to amend the November 15, 2021 City Comprehensive Plan as amended to add the Parks and Rec Master Plan, Parks and Recreation Master Plan.
Second. Okay, can we vote? Great. Thank you. That is steady. Thank you, Ms. Anthony. The next item on the agenda is, I'm really just a written report, I just wanted to make a quick note about that from the Charlottesville Convention and Visitors Bureau. I serve on that committee as part of the council, and I love it. I learned a lot from Courtney and other staff and other board members on there. It's really, I just learned so much about this community. So, so this is a report, so I don't know if anyone had any questions or anything on that, sir.
No, no questions. We're just, highlight for the community, the city contributes about 1.5 million a year, and the county 1.3 million. So it is a significant investment from both the city and county. And then, of course, the report highlights how they spent that money as well. I just wanted to highlight that.
Yeah. This, okay, thank you, Courtney. Appreciate you. The next item on the agenda is the second time for community, community matters. And so I'll open it up again for anyone who'd like to speak. You have up to three minutes. Anyone like to, to speak? Okay, I will close the community matters with no further business. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Vote, please. Thank you so much.
Hey, Sam, I have a quick question.